You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
We appreciate it. Are we ready to start, Mr. Navas?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, June 25, 2018. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number three, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is composed of items 3A through 3L. We'd like to make a request to delete item number 3C for the HR department. And we'd also like to make a correction to item number 3A. 3A should read, "Accept the annual reports from the Riskpool Board, Veterans Advisory Board, County Civil Service Board, and Sheriff's Civil Service Commission." Are there any other items that members of the Court of the Public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners, any items you'd like pulled, or members of the public?
Hearing none, I'd make a motion to approve with the deletion of C and the correction to A.
Second?
Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Voel.
Aye.
Motion carries. And this brings us to item number four, public comments.
We have two members of the public signed up to speak today. Our first speaker will be Ms. Rose Lucetl in regards to Running with the Bulls.
I don't know what that is, but this sounds awesome.
Sounds like Commissioner Hagerty has already volunteered to attend.
Awesome. I love it. Good morning.
I'm very, very slow, though.
That's okay. We appreciate people who are not marathon runners, I'm just saying. Good morning. My name is Rose Lucetl, and today I am here in the capacity as a new entrepreneur in our sun city. I started a small business called Big Red Enterprise, and I think Commissioner Perez could probably appreciate that, as we're both ex-highlanders. Running with the bulls is a fun run where local roller derby girls will be the bulls. So, nobody call PETA. We're pet-friendly. Nobody's gonna be harmed or injured. The roller derby girls will deck out their helmets with horns. They skate through the crowd and gently tap people, excuse me, with either a swim noodle or an inflatable bat, plastic bat, Nerf bat, anything like that. Participants who register for this run wear white, just like they do in Spain. The first 500 people who register get a red bandana, so we spare you having to go run out and look for that. But this is a fun run. It'll take place here downtown on Saturday, July 7. It'll be staged in the Arts Festival Plaza. The route right now is scheduled because of construction. You know, that changes on a given moment downtown. But right now, the route is scheduled for, starting on Santa Fe Street in front of the convention center, going up towards Franklin, right on Franklin, right on Kansas. We're gonna be passing right here off to the side of the county courthouse, right on Overland, all the way to Santa Fe, and back to the Arts Festival Plaza, which is right next to the El Paso Art Museum. So, we're looking forward to having lots of El Pasoans participate in this. A percentage of the proceeds do benefit a couple of local charities, Make-A-Wish Foundation being one of them, the other being a charity of choice as selected by the roller derby girls. What gives me a lot of hope for this event is similar events have taken place across the United States, the most successful being in New Orleans. In 2005, New Orleans started with 14 roller derby girls and 1,500 participants. Last year alone, they had 15,000 people register for this event. They have almost 500 roller derby girls participate from all over the United States, and they sell out every hotel in their city. So, that gives me hope for our own downtown. As El Paso stands today, there are 530 hotel rooms. By next summer, there are 1,200 hotel rooms downtown. So, I hope that you'll be encouraged to walk, shuffle your feet, jog. It doesn't matter. We don't judge. We just want you to come out and have a good time.
Questions, Commissioners?
Thank you so much for all that you do for El Paso. You've always been so incredibly involved, and I hope that you've got a great turnout for the event this year.
Thank you. And to register, it's borderlandbulls.com. Thank you again. Have a good day.
Have a good afternoon. Our next speaker is Mr. Pierre Andre Uzadega. Good morning, Mr. Uzadega.
Good morning, gentlemen. My fellow Americans, good morning. Fourth of July is coming up. El Paso, Texas, USA, right? El Paso is somewhat getting a lot of attention nationally because of immigration, right? We're unifying and we're addressing immigration wholeheartedly. Democrats, Republicans, one way or another, we're all participating in this issue. Over the weekend, that's all I heard, immigration this, oh, the border, immigration that. And I'm like, cool, that's great. I'm applauding and I'm hoping, right? I have my fingers crossed, but I have them behind my back. Now, I'm like, okay, that costs some money, right? But at least we're getting some attention. Border security, okay, but that costs some money. We're still getting some attention. El Paso, okay? How do we continue this momentum? How do we show that we're efficient? I talk about flags, you know, flags, a lot. See me with my flag. Why not think about showing our respect and efficiency for one another by placing a Mexican flag, a large Mexican flag, and a large USA flag along every bridge? Now, we're promoting ourselves somewhat. We're promoting the border. We're promoting efficiency. We're promoting to the rest of the nation, to the rest of the state, that El Paso knows how to handle the border. Period. Period. The border's still beneficial to this region, a binational region, right? Now, this is what I'm trying to get to. Okay, that's El Paso. That's my idea. Those are my two cents. But Texas is coming up for an important time, six months down the road. El Paso has to do this, I believe, in order to show east Texas, in order to show Austin, San Antonio, Dallas, that El Paso really knows what we're doing when it comes to issues, national issues. Cannabis is another one. Cannabis generates money, whereas other issues somewhat are more costly. I'm saying El Paso has to continue doing what we're doing. Whatever it is we're doing, I think it's great, democratically and republically. We're doing it wholeheartedly, like I said. But we, as El Paso, need to make sure that Texas understands the direction that El Paso believes Texas should head into, because we have, again, the border. So, we have to leverage our assets in order to show Texas that what we're doing here is okay. And not only here in Texas, but nationally, because, again, Fourth of July is coming up, and I want to see people act American. I don't want to see timid. When you come here, people want to come here because they want to have the American attitude. I'm number one. That's why people flee their countries because they're not so much number one. But in order for us nationally as Americans to leverage American assets, we have to legalize cannabis, because an independent attitude addresses all issues, all issues. Women's issues, gender issues, entrepreneurial issues. I just want to get to work. I just want to have a job that I'm good at, that I can bring home some food and put it on the table. And I want to make sure that this industry that I want to be number one at also secures those flags as being number one, number one state. Why not? Texas is a large state. You ask any of the other governors, they'll say Texas has more stake in any issue because geographically we're just so large, right? Our governing body is much larger than everybody else. So, Texas, that name right behind you, gentlemen, right there. And I am talking to my fellow El Pasoans as well. Texas friends, more serious about that. DJT, that's your man, right? DJT. I like DJT as a businessman. He was a businessman before he was a government man. I'm more of a businessman. But being up here, I've learned, and I spoke with government men. And government is somewhat a business. We have to take care of our citizenry. The number one country in the world, the number one business in the world, that's what I'm hoping to do. Gentlemen, that's why I'm here. Fourth of July, fireworks. I want to see the people just celebrate. And I do want to see people be more open with cannabis. I'm just saying that here. I want people to have what I have. It's just the American attitude. We have to do it sooner or later. Why not just sooner than later? So, I want to start seeing people just be more open. And I'm being genuine, respectful, just go casual, go about your business, consume, let people know it is coming. I'm hoping I can urge you, let us get together and just continue this attitude to be number one, to legalization, to get into that point where we need to get, and really address all issues and generate revenue for the government and for industry. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. I'll see you next week. Hopefully, God willing, God bless us all. To my daughter Riley, I love you. I'll see you guys. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Uzadega. Have a good afternoon. That is it for public comment, Mr. Navas.
Thank you, Judge. Item number 5A, presentations. Presentation of certificate of appreciation to former civil service commissioner Lee Rodriguez for her time in service on the County of El Paso Civil Service Commission.
Is Ms. Rodriguez here? Excellent. If you'd please come up to the podium. So, as all of you know, El Paso County has several boards and commissions that really could not function effectively if we didn't have wonderful individuals from the community who are willing to step up and share other time and talent to make sure that they run as smoothly as possible. And in this case, for the county's civil service commission, it's a really important one for us in that we deal directly with our employees. And so, the policy that you have put into place and the practices that you have put into place ensure that we, as an organization, are being fair and open in working with our biggest treasure, which is our employees. And so, we thank you for your service. You were first appointed, and I say this now, Ms. Rodriguez, just so that everybody in the audience is aware, but you were first appointed by Judge Escobar back in 2016 and have served over the last two years. And we're very sad to see you have to move on, but we're really grateful for your service on our board. So, thank you very, very much. We have a little plaque here for you that we'd like to present on behalf of the county. So, we could get a round of applause, please.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the opportunity. Thank you. Judge, just to add to the comments, Ms. Rodriguez's service on our civil service board, as you mentioned, it's really critical. It's one of the most important boards the county has, as it hears very difficult, complex matters involving our staff. They also help HR with vetting policies, and she has been an excellent addition to our board. We are very sad to see her go.
Very much.
But we hope to work with her again in the future.
Thank you.
Item number 5B, receive a presentation from Medical Center of the Americas Foundation.
Good morning, Ms. Butler.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. My name is Jackie Butler. I'm Director of Promotion and People for the MCA Foundation.
Yeah, get enough. Maybe you can move it just a little closer so everyone can hear you. There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm here to talk about one of the most recent initiatives that we have going on at the MCA Foundation. Some of you are familiar with it, but some of you aren't. And so, I wanted to make sure we get in front of you before we start really spreading this throughout the city and the region, and hopefully get your questions and your input before we make any concrete changes. I'm here with my colleague, Cecina Varela. She is managing our initiative in Juarez. So, I just wanted to make sure that she was here to help support if you have any questions for her as well. So, the initiative I'm going to talk to you about today is called Bio El Paso Juarez. It's a new organization that we're forming, and it really works to the vision of the MCA, which is to cultivate a dynamic health industry and innovation entrepreneurship economy that competes globally. And so, we really feel that working as a region, we're able to compete more globally than if we were to work as an individual city. than, than if we were to, to work, um, as an individual city, uh, or county. And so, um, just for those who aren't familiar, I wanted to, uh, give you just a brief overview of what the MCA is. So, so really what the MCA is trying to do is to cultivate an innovation ecosystem. We're trying to tackle this issue of creating an ecosystem on multiple, uh, from multiple angles and different facets. And so you'll see that a lot of the, the, the programs and initiatives we have are focused on workforce development, um, and economic development, working with partners such as the Border Plex Alliance. Uh, but we also, um, have laboratory spaces, and we have our biomedical incubator, um, in the MCA campus that's, that's to, um, incubate entrepreneurs and startups who have innovations that they need support building. Um, we also have a lot of, of infrastructure projects underway. We, um, are building a VA clinic on, uh, on the MCA campus right now. Um, and we are charged with making sure that the growth of the MCA campus is done, um, in a, in a coordinate, in as much a coordinated fashion as possible to help, uh, all the stakeholders, um, realize the value of, of a cohesive campus here in El Paso. So we like to think of the MCA as a tree when we talk about our programs and our infrastructure. The, the infrastructure that we have, um, really, it makes up the trunk and the, and the branches of the tree. Um, without our infrastructure projects, we wouldn't have any long-term funding to continue the work that we're trying to do. Um, but we also have a lot of different programs and initiatives that we like to call the leaves of our tree, um, that really make what the MCA is doing worthwhile. So programs such as our Innovation Center, which helps entrepreneurs and startups in the, in the region, clinical trials, we're trying to help create, uh, more of those opportunities for physicians here in the region. Workforce development and also promotion, not just of the MCA, but of the life sciences industry here in the region. If you have any questions about the MCA's programs or initiatives, I left a copy of our annual report for all of you. Um, I'd also like to, uh, take this opportunity to invite you all to our Demo Day, which is happening this Friday afternoon. Um, this is, uh, our inaugural Demo Day where, um, all of the, the startups that have been incubating at the MCA since October will be demonstrating their businesses. Um, and it's going to be a really fun community event, and we, and it's open to the public for anybody who's, who's interested. So Bio El Paso Juarez is our newest program. Um, we're trying to work on the continuum of, of innovation and entrepreneurship here in the region in the life sciences industry. So while we're working with startups at the very beginning of that continuum, we also, um, started realizing a few years ago that there's a very large biomedical industry in the region already. It's been silently growing in Juarez over the last, uh, decade or so. Um, and, and when we started to talk about the biomedical industry and medical device manufacturing, we started, uh, counting the number of manufacturers that are already here, the number of employees that they have, and we realized it's a giant. And so, um, we, when we started thinking about this as an, as an industry that we can help support to grow, and we started talking to the manufacturers, while it's been a strength of theirs to kind of operate silently and in their silos over the last decade, they're at a point now where they realize that there's strength in numbers. And so a lot of the needs that they're experiencing, um, they can address if they work together collectively. And so we, over the last year, have been working very closely with the Cluster Biomedico Regional, which has already formed in Juarez, that has, um, really strong relationships with the medical device manufacturers there. Um, and we started talking to them about creating an MOU with the MCA so that we can operate as one binational biomedical cluster group. And so, um, over the last year, we've really been going through the details of that MOU. It's, it's very complicated. I, there's no, like, roadmap for creating a binational organization. Um, and so we have done all of the legal paperwork and are now very happy to say that we are ready to launch Bio El Paso Juarez. If there's any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. So the MCA is taking the lead because, uh, we, uh, already have a very complex organizational structure. Um, and, and we're, we're, we're prepared to add a 501(c)(6) to our organizational structure very easily. So Bio El Paso Juarez will be a 501(c)(6) organization, which is different from what we have now. We, we don't have another, uh, 501(c)(6). As a 501(c)(6), we'll be organized more as a professional association, um, where people will become members of that, uh, by paying dues. We'll also be able to lobby for the needs of the industry if we need to. Bio El Paso Juarez. Why now? So some of you are aware, and some of you were able to attend our, a symposium that the MCA hosted last November on medical device manufacturing. At that symposium, we were able to bring over 180 people who are already working in the industry together to talk about the future of the industry here in El Paso and Juarez, and also what the, the collective needs of the industry are. We polled the group while we were there at the event and afterwards and found that overwhelming majority of those who attended feel that they would benefit from a binational biomedical cluster group. In the, the polling, the data collection that we've been able to do so far, we have, um, we have categorized over 20 medical device manufacturers just in the region alone. Um, and that makes up over 40,000 people working in the industry here in El Paso and Juarez. Um, the, the workforce, um, uh, workforce Border Plex? Um, I'm sorry, I'm spacing on the name. But they, they conducted a study just last year and were able to project the growth of the bio, of the medical device industry here in El Paso to grow by 11% over the next five years. Um, at the conference that we held last year, the overwhelming majority of attendees said that talent development was a critical need for the industry. And so, we feel very strongly that by, um, polling those who are already in business here in El Paso and being able to bring everybody together, we have a very viable plan for a very successful organization here to help support them. So, over the last year, we've gotten buy-in from a lot of the manufacturers in the region. Sorry. Um, we have a steering committee that has worked very, very closely, um, made up of some of the largest medical device manufacturers already operating here. Um, in, in addition to Johnson &amp; Johnson, Cardinal Health, Rexmed, and CESA, we also have, um, some suppliers and service providers that have been involved in the conversations about developing this group. Um, and so we've worked collectively, the MCA, with the Cluster Biomedico de Juarez, with these organizations, um, to, to create the, the membership base for this organization. So we have four, uh, primary goals for, for, for Bio El Paso Juarez. Uh, the first is enhanced industry performance. Um, by bringing everybody together, we're able to identify those, those needs and, and gaps, uh, in the ecosystem and be able to enhance the industry as a whole. The improvement of human talent is a huge, uh, goal for us. Um, FDA regulatory issues, uh, there's not a lot of, 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 um, knowledge base in those areas of expertise here. A lot of the large manufacturers have to import talent from other areas, or they're stealing employees from other manufacturers. And so our goal is to work with the universities and the community colleges, bring in training providers to be able to elevate the talent workforce here. Um, growth of the biomedical industry is, is, um, uh, I think, a goal for everybody who's working in any kind of economic development initiative. Um, same for Bio El Paso Juarez, and growth of business opportunities in the region, not just for the manufacturers, but the entire supply chain.
Jackie, that was one of the questions that I had is, have we taken a look at, in terms of the lack of talent, I guess? I don't know if that's the best way to phrase it, but have we looked at what educational tracks we're missing or need to continue to enhance in order to funnel and be able to support this kind of work?
Yes, we have. Um, so we've had lengthy discussions with the medical device manufacturers who are on the ground doing this work every day. Um, when you're dealing with medical devices, you obviously have different layers of regulatory issues that you have to deal with. Um, most of the manufacturers go by the FDA because that's one of the most rigorous regulations worldwide. And so FDA regulatory compliance is something that everybody sees as a need here. Um, we've worked with Johnson &amp; Johnson specifically, and Conredes, which is a Border Plex Alliance, uh, program, um, to put together curriculum, uh, that could be easily instituted at universities in El Paso and Juarez. So I know that Johnson &amp; Johnson is working directly with UTEP now, and Conredes is working with Oasejota in Juarez to be able to bring in kind of like a basics-level introductory course to medical device manufacturing. And so we're working on all levels for talent development right now. So our mission is to convene and provide a platform for industry, government, nonprofit, and education institutions that have a passion to improve the region's global competitiveness and quality of healthcare, to collaborate in efforts to enhance the El Paso Juarez biomedical ecosystem. The goal, overriding goal, is to accelerate the formation, expansion, retention, and attraction of biomedical enterprise in the region. We have, um, a, a long, um, membership, uh, application and forms for any level of members to be able to come in and realize benefits from being a part of this organization. And so, we're, um, I failed to mention that the Bio name, if you're not familiar, Bio International is a huge organization. It's worldwide. Uh, it is for anybody working in medical devices, pharmaceutical, um, uh, development, anything having to do with bio, um, industry. Uh, Bio International is that, um, is that member-based association. Usually, states have their own Bios that are part of Bio International. In Texas, it's the Texas, uh, Biosciences and Healthcare Institute. And, um, the, the Texas Institute has granted El Paso the permission to use Bio as a name. Um, and we feel that having El Paso and Juarez specifically called out after Bio geolocates us very clearly to the rest of the world who wants to know what we're doing here. And so, um, through Bio International, we have access as members of the Texas Association to their group purchasing discounts. And so that's something that we'd be able to offer our members as well. So we'll have member directories, which are very valuable to service providers.
Sometimes Commissioners Court can be really tough on people.
I have kids, it's okay. It's, I, I understand. Um, and so you'll see here that we've worked very thoroughly to make sure that everything that we're providing as an organization will reap benefits for everybody who's able to, to join. So in front of you, I have left, uh, one of the first flyers we've been able to develop for Bio El Paso Juarez. And I just wanted to go through that just so you understand what the primary, um, focus of BioEPJ will be initially. And so initially, what we're really trying to do, when we're bringing on members, we're asking them, how many employees do they have? What is their corporate structure like? Where are their employees located? What are their primary talent development needs? So we're really trying very hard to be able to map the ecosystem that exists here. It's very complicated. Most of the big corporate manufacturers have very complicated ecosystems. And so we're trying to figure out how that works across borders here in El Paso and Juarez. Um, and we feel that once we're able to map that and cat, and really capture that data, we'll be able to sell the region, um, much better. Um, we'll also be able to build relationships once we're able to say how many, uh, suppliers we have, how many, um, sterilization centers we have, how many manufacturers we have concretely, then we'll be able to bring in more. Um, we'll also be able to identify gaps and weaknesses. Just as one example, we've already been able to identify sterilization as a huge need here in El Paso for the manufacturers that are operating in Juarez. And so, all of the big manufacturers, well, all of the manufacturers have to send their products back to the US to get sterilized. We have two sterilization centers here, one in Santa Teresa, one in Far East El Paso, and they're at capacity. And so a lot of the manufacturers are already sending their, their, their products to Albuquerque, or LA, or San Angelo. And so what we're going to be able to see once we map the ecosystem and the needs is how many of those manufacturers can benefit from an expanded sterilization center, as an example. Our other focus for this first year is really to promote the region as a whole. And so we've already been to a couple of conferences this year. We plan on going to a couple more at the end of the year, um, to really tout what we're doing. We have a huge, very, um, productive and growing industry. And so how do we, how do we, um, uh, work together to make sure that we're all, um, promoting ourselves as we should? Our other focus area is regulatory compliance, which I mentioned earlier. I'm, we're really excited to say that we've already worked with one, uh, training provider that has, that specializes in FDA compliance and regulatory training. Um, and they previously only offered, uh, training courses in Boston, Philadelphia, LA, and Berlin. So we were able to bring them here with the help of Workforce Solutions Border Plex. Um, we toured them on a cou- couple of plant tours in Juarez. We had a whole day with them here at the MCA. And they were convinced that they would have a huge market here if they were to start providing these medical device training, um, opportunities. And so as of a couple of weeks ago, they've added El Paso to their list of locations. And so seeing a map like this, where you know that the other five locations are hubs for medical device manufacturing, is really one of our goals, which is to put El Paso Juarez on the map. And so we're really here to let you know that we feel that, um, this new organization won't succeed, and it won't work unless we have all of the major stakeholders involved in supporting it. We really feel that, um, the medical device industry is something that can be, um, very, very fruitful and can be the future of industry here in El Paso and Juarez. And so, uh, we're really asking for your support and your buy-in for this organization. Um, and not just you, everybody that, that is involved in economic development, in academia, the suppliers, the investors, the startups, everybody who has anything to do with economic development, job growth, job creation, as well as medical, um, healthcare issues, should, should, uh, be interested in joining. So specifically for, for El Paso County and other government and community organizations, um, we really feel that, that having you involved will help us to facilitate economic development, job growth, and talent reta- retention for our community. Will increase the region's participation in all aspects of the innovation pipeline. Uh, will fill a critical gap in the expansion of the industry here. Um, and will also help to align the needs of, of, and education training programs throughout the region. So right now, we're in our soft-launch stage. We're trying to get as many people on board as possible before we, we have our formal launch in late August, early September of this year. Um, we already have our 501(c)(6) designation by the state of Texas and are, are finalizing the MOU with the, the Cluster Biomedico Regional in Juarez now. We have our website up. It's live, it's wonderful, it's beautiful. Um, BioElPasoJuarez.org, if you're interested in learning more about our organization. Um, if you need to get in touch with anybody, Cecilia is here. She's, uh, operating, she's directing all of our functions in Juarez. And I'm here, working on the El Paso side to help, uh, get this organization off the ground. So with that, I'll take any questions? If you have any.
Jackie, what would we need to do to participate, uh, moving forward?
Um, we would just have to work with you to get you formally signed up. Um, the, the, the membership dues for, um, government organization is, is minimal. Um, and then really, um, let us know if you want to be a part of our steering committee or be more involved with the, the activities that we have going. Uh, we'd like to work with you as closely as possible, moving forward.
You could continue to work with Betsy to get us the information. I think that it was already sent to us previously, but at some point, we'll put an item on the agenda to, to discuss formalizing a commitment to join.
Great.
Um, and then are there any other avenues that you think we can participate in? I know there was discussion about a, a challenge, a Bio challenge.
So, um, we've, there, there have been discussions about putting together, uh, an economic development incentive um, to bring in a biomedical device company. Um, I think that has been pushed off to next year, um, just because this is taking, getting Bio El Paso Juarez off the ground is taking, um, a lot of time and effort, uh, on our part to make sure we get it right. And so, um, we'll continue those discussions. I know it's still a plan for the future. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity. Appreciate it. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Thanks.
Mr. Nava, um, item D, I believe, is a, another recognition item? And so we could move that, that up, and then we'll take item C.
Absolutely, sir. Item number 5D, receive a presentation from the Anthony Independent School District Summer Food Program.
Good morning, good morning, Judge. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I haven't met the new judge. Uh, my name's Jesus. Uh, I work at Anthony NSD. I'm the Child Nutrition Director. Uh, we've been working with the county for the past five years. Um, I'll, I'll let you guys know a little bit about myself. I've been working for the school district since 2010. Uh, I remember the first summer, the first year we worked there, uh, we didn't have a summer program. We only had two sites. We only had two sites. Since we're a small district, some of my employees didn't have a job. They're mostly five-hour employees, five hours a day, so they don't get paid 24 paychecks like a manager do or a teacher. So throughout the summer, they didn't have any paychecks coming in. So second year, I started going through the website, trying to expand the program. We opened a few sites. We got a few rec centers for the city, some pools. And I was able to get everybody a job the next summer. And after that, I put my daughter in T-Ball, and that's where I bumped into Gallegos on, was it July of 2013 or 2014, June? So I told myself, you know, I saw so many kids in that park. I mean, we usually serve there about 400 to 450 meals a day at that park. So that same summer, I got ahold of El Paso County, and we were able to get that park in July. It was a month late because summers start in June. So for these past five years, we serve Gallegos. Let me give you guys some quick numbers. The total, I think the total for the past four years, and I'm not even including this summer yet, because we still haven't even finished the month of June, but the total for these past four years is 59,993. So we're three numbers short, seven, to get 60,000 meals in these past four years. So and in behalf of me, Anthony ISD, and TDA, which is Texas Department of Culture, we want to give a plaque, especially to Commissioner Hagary. I remember I lost contact the first year, the guy who was in charge of the rec center. And I met him at a meeting that he had in Benton. I was trying to get a summary because I found out in May that my contact was not there no more. So I was like, how am I going to get this park rolling again? So I met him at the meeting, and that's where I met Candy as well. And with his help, I was able to get, you know, every year, we're just rolling it. Because it took us a while just to get it, you know, the whole contract and the whole paperwork. So I didn't want to start all over. So he guided me to the right person. And every year, we just send an email, hey, we're ready. Give them the dates. So, you know, I do want to thank him, and especially the whole county itself, for partnering up with us. So we have a little plaque for Commissioner Hagary.
Thank you.
I was not expecting that. Thank you.
We usually do five, 10, and my only 10 has been Wet and Wild. We gave her a 10-year, because we've been serving meals there for 10 years already. And that's it, guys. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the work that you do in the community. We appreciate it.
And right now is really awesome, man. I mean, now I have my boys in T-Ball, so I get to, I'm there, and I see my employees, and I see the coaches. Liz is an awesome person there. I coordinate with her a lot. She gives me the schedules. I mean, it's packed. It's packed. And I'm really happy. I think you guys are going to remodel it. Is that good?
We are, and that's what was one of our agenda items today on Gallegos Park today.
Hey, we're out there.
We're still in the process. We're trying to do, we're in the process of doing what we can to make the parks better. But I do want to say, Jesus has been just a fantastic, fantastic asset to El Paso, El Paso County. The number of kids that are able to eat good meals throughout the summer months is just incredible. So all the work he does partnering with even Wet and Wild and making sure the kids at Wet and Wild have a meal, the parks, it's just a fantastic organization. And just the work that he does is fantastic. We missed the kickoff this year because it was on Monday, and we're in Commissioner's Court. But last year, Commissioner Leon and I were there and were able to, I was dunked in a dunk tank for a while.
I tried to get some video, but we couldn't find it. I know we have video.
I dropped pretty quick. That went down fast. Kids have rocket arms, really. But thank you for all you do. Appreciate that.
Yes, yes. And we're moving on. We lost, you know, after my previous boss took off, we lost, we went down a little bit, but little by little, we're growing. We were able to get back to the city. So we're doing some other parks on the west side. I remember the first year I opened a park and doing the day, it was just so hot, so hot. So I told myself, you know what? Just jogging around, I see kids in the afternoon, so I'm like, let's do dinner then, you know, because even though the slides are really hot, nobody goes in, and there's trees, which now the parks have big grown trees. Well, Gallegos does, because, I mean, it's been there for years. But after opening dinner, I mean, that's where the numbers are at, and that's where we get to feed those kids in the afternoon. And I'm really involved with the T-Ball, so we're there at least four times a week, every day at that Gallegos Park. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
Then I segue into the next presentation.
About works. Item number 5C, receive a presentation from Moms On Board regarding the installation of all-needs-inclusive park equipment at Escarate Park.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have been meeting and having some conversations with this organization called Moms On Board recently. And it's an organization, it's a local nonprofit that was founded by Adrian Moody and by Leila Zaiden Safa. And, you know, they're here to focus on efforts that look at bringing more family-friendly amenities to El Paso. You know, they also serve as a networking tool for local families. They have about 5,000 family members participating on their Facebook daily. They're a community group that looks to foster and look out for all the concerns for their members. Civic engagement is also something that has been a passion for them. And, you know, one of the things that they've also been working on is to get out the vote campaign for this November, which includes curbside childcare at early voting sites, which I think is pretty cool. And so I'm very happy to have them here today to discuss a project that we've been looking at over the last couple of months at Escarate Park. And so ladies, you can come up to the podium, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I guess I have to pull it up. Okay. Can you guys hear me? Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to present with you today. We recently met with each Commissioner, County Parks, and County Administrator to discuss our vision for Escarate Park. Most of you know about Moms On Board, but here are a couple of facts about our group. Moms On Board has grown to over 5,200 members online, and we average 50 to 100 new members per week. It has turned into a wonderful family networking hub that has helped El Pasoans navigate the city. The response rate is within minutes, and you are sure to find what you were looking for in the sun city. The events we've hosted have been well-received and well-attended. We support family activities and events that are accessible to all families. This is why we are here today. We humbly ask you for your approval to build an all-inclusive destination park on a portion of Escarate. Our eyes are around the mini lake. We will share specifics later in the presentation, but I would love to introduce you to my partner and co-founder, Leila Zaiden Safa. She will explain why it's important for our region.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So we are really excited about the potential this has for our unique bi-national environment. With the help of the Paso del Norte Territable Foundation, MOP is on a mission to raise $2.5 million. Some statistics we found clearly show our region is in need of a park like this. The Paso del Norte Children's Development Center showed approximately 7,000 children referred, excuse me, and served in 2015 to their various programs. These services stop at age three, when the child either transfers to the school district services or private services. Data also shows the autism spectrum disorder is the fastest-growing serious developmental disability affecting an estimated one out of 68 children in the United States. With this number growing at a significant rate, there continues to be a lack of services to meet their needs. While the benefit of a park like this is clear for children, we must not overlook its potential to our elderly and disabled military personnel, either for their own personal use or while taking care of their grandchildren children. So one of our goals is to support the physical and social cognitive development of all children, which helps establish confidence and promote side-by-side play. For developing children, play is learning. Children learn to solve problems, make decisions, persevere, and interact with the people and objects in the environment. They develop language, symbolic thinking, social skills, and motor skills. Physical play has many positive outcomes. Many studies show the many benefits of physical activity for children. They are healthier, have higher self-esteem, and are better prepared to learn. Playgrounds are an ideal environment for supporting overall healthy development for children. We play together today for a better tomorrow. This park has the potential to serve our Borderplex and our surrounding areas, including Culverston County, Hudson County, Dona Anna County, and Otero County. As a side note, my dad was a child and adult neurologist, and his Friday appointments were reserved strictly for his out-of-town, traveling patients. We know that there still is a population in our outside areas that must travel to see their specialized doctors. So imagine if their visit to El Paso could include some downtime and fun.
You know, growing up in El Paso, going to Escarate was definitely something I'd eat my broccoli for. I would go every weekend with my family and friends. It was a sense of pride for me, and still is for a lot of families. Every city needs that central park, a park that invokes pride, and Escarate is El Paso's park. One saying I hear all the time is El Paso is on the brink of a renaissance. And I absolutely love when I hear people say this. The whole city is either under construction, or the old is becoming new again. MOP wants to be a part of that excitement. Many citizens don't see it as a county park or know the ins and outs of who has ownership over it. All they know is it's the most recognizable park in the city. Together with county, we are excited at the thought of building a long-term relationship to revitalize such a landmark in our city. MOP is about bringing families together, and an all-inclusive park will do this and so much more. Our vision includes various amenities such as dino dig, paddle boats, garden, music center, common areas, train rides, maze, exercise equipment, mini golf, splash pad, mini baseball field, and an all-distinguished, all-abilities park. We understand that this is not a small task and that it will not get funded overnight. Paseo Paso, Del Norte Territable Foundation and MOP have come up with a strategic course of action. We have a substantial number of grants to apply for to fit our scope of interest. We have a core group of people already interested in considering monetary support. MOP is in the process of meeting with our target sponsors and are excited to explore all the foundations and grant opportunities. We had a trial run last week. We went to GT's Playhouse. For those of you who don't know what GT's is, it's a learning center for people living with Down Syndrome. And they opened their doors, and they had short notice, so there was about 15 to 20 members, which was good. It was good for us to practice. And we showed them our presentation, we showed them the pictures and all this, and they were so excited. What can we do? What can we do? Well, you know, just give us a couple of letters of support, you know, maybe a couple from your family members, and just let us know. And sure enough, in one week's notice, we got 256 letters of excitement and support for this project. We also have visions to form a citizens group. Part of our vision is to have a citizens group that will include experts in the field of special needs. It will also achieve community ownership and community buy-in. We will encourage events, playdates, and engagement at the park. Hosting community forums will also be included to ensure that this park is accessible for Everyone wants to know how this all came together. I would like to introduce you to Athel Flores. She was the mom that inspired it all. Athel has two children within the spectrum, and she has had a goal for all children to play together in an all-inclusive park for a while. She got inspired by watching the Facebook video she saw about an all-needs park in Denver. She then started asking around and was soon referred to MOP. It was just perfect timing, because Leila and I were tinkering with the same exact idea as well. So since then, we've been collaborating, and we have now a solid group of 10 moms and dads that are having meeting after meeting, after meeting, meetings between those meetings, and meetings about the meetings. But it's so been worth it, because it's been well-received in our community, and we're excited to show you guys what we came up with.
MOP has been working with Denver Riddick at Site Southwest Architecture Firm, kind of put all our vision down on paper. So here are some ideas that we'd like to share. We are envisioning different sections of the park dedicated to different activities. Let me just give you guys a little reference. We're looking at including a train and a carousel, all-inclusive play areas. We have several playgrounds, but then around, there is different areas to look at, including, if you can see, the little huts and some seesaw-type slides. That one down at the bottom is a slide that is accessible to everybody.
Very inactive, because if you don't have upper body strength, you could just kind of pull yourself. But I could also see tons of kids just enjoying that ride down there. This one is one of our favorites. It's very open, it's very colorful, it's very spacious. And if you notice, on the bottom right, it's like a turnaround thing. If you're in a wheelchair, you could wheel up, it's so low to the ground, you could wheel up to it and scoot yourself inside of it, and then a friend can push you around. And it also has tons of back support, just in case you don't have that.
Bright color that we are wanting to see.
Pretty, it's really important to have that turf with all-inclusive, because you don't want any mulch or curbs or anything getting in the way of the wheelchair.
For the mini golf.
And that's.
If you want to take the mic with you.
Yeah. Okay. So the mini golf, where is that? It would be here. This is the entrance, the plaza. It's all-inclusive park, a mini baseball field, a carousel. Then you could take a train ride all the way to the south side, if you feel that way, or if you want to just go out and take walks.
But be able to do, you know, varying activities, or decide as a parent, what, how you plan to maneuver the park, how you're going to exit the park, so you would kind of strategically plan your way around.
Another very important aspect of an all-inclusive is having transition zones, because some children, all children actually, don't want to ever leave the park. So if you're parked here, you're in the carousel, hey, let's go check out this, let's go check out that, and you can navigate yourself to the car without having a big... So this is a splash pad kind of idea we're thinking of.
A really neat component that we'd like to do is provide some sort of interactive sculptures and try and also include some of El Paso's history and culture. We're looking at possibly opening this up in terms of like a competition. But this is geared, one, for learning and enjoyment, but also for the older children, teens who are too cool for a park, but would totally go hang out at these.
The top picture, that's swing. So you could just kind of sit in that and swing. Thought that was kind of neat.
Paddle boats. Exercise equipment. Again, there is equipment that is accessible to, specialized for wheelchair-bound individuals, and so also rehabilitation.
I think we put it kind of like in a corner right by a parking lot. I think we put it kind of like in a corner right by a parking lot, so if a senior just wants to come and exercise, he doesn't have to...
Go through the whole park.
Go through the whole park.
But we can envision, you know, rehabilitation happening, your occupational therapist coming, doing some sort of exercise, and then heading out. We're looking at doing a mini village. This is a great place to put naming opportunities for different various businesses and individuals, and also encourages the pretend play that we know that children love. And a mini racetrack. We would like to see children of all abilities utilize this and just have fun enjoying that racing around.
This is pretty important. It's a sensory tunnel, and they're placed about three or four around the whole lake. Sensory tunnel is geared towards children living with autism, and it's kind of they need a quiet spot to just kind of get away from it all, or any child really, you know. But if you notice on the bottom left, the sun is coming through, creating some really cool lighting. The one on the top right is a real dark tunnel that they could just kind of like hang out if they feel a little too overwhelmed.
It's important to note that these tunnels are accessible for wheelchair-bound children. That is an activity that most wheelchair-bound children do not get to ever participate in. So this is an opportunity for that. I also can see a grandparent caregiver who is taking care of their child and doesn't necessarily want to crawl through the tunnel, but they could walk really nicely through. And coming up. Buster the slides.
This is one of my favorites. So if you notice, it's on a slope, it's called a slope slide, but a parent can wheel up their child up this hill, put them on the slide, and then it's rollers, so they just kind of roll down. But it's easy for the parent because they could just go down that hill and pick them up. They don't have to take time going down the stairs with the wheelchair and all that stuff. One of my favorites, if you see, there's rock climbing too. So it's all children playing together, which is very important for growth.
The sand area and dino dig, so just again incorporating different aspects of our life and bringing nature in. And it also now comes together with the demonstration garden. I know we are aware that there are the master gardeners at Escarrete, so we thought this would be a nice partnership to pull them in and help our community about.
GT's was excited about this because they said that they would love to take their students there to help maintain it too.
Maze. Interesting about this one is that it can be reconfigured, so the perimeter would be set, but you could come in and change the maze, so it would not be, you know, the same one forever. Kids memorize things. And then the mini baseball field at the bottom that sits across from the existing baseball field.
We had a brief discussion with the Chihuahuas, and this was kind of their idea. It was real tentative, but they were excited. They've been wanting to bring like a mini baseball field somewhere at some park, so they were excited to partnership, partner with us.
Questions? Thoughts? Any questions?
So you mentioned helping raise 2.4 million to help create the vision that you've put together here. I assume at that point then the county would maintain the park?
Yes, sir. That's what we're envisioning, but also leaving you guys with some, a community group as well to work with, and we'll still be working with you as well. And the 2.4 that we've talked about, that's, we're thinking the first phase of the all destination park area, pretty much the north side, just kind of concentrating on that and then eventually working our way back.
When do you envision, I know it's a long way off, groundbreaking?
When they have 2.4 million dollars.
You know, so our acronym is Mobb, so we envision at least a year.
The momentum is there, the excitement is there. I think that if we get the approval to go ahead and continue exploring this opportunity and say, yes, we can start getting the funding to come in, then there, I know there are some details that we would have to discuss, but I could see this happening sooner rather than later.
And we're excited to work with you as well. We know that there's a master plan also for the whole Escarrete, so we haven't seen that yet, so we need to have another meeting and discuss how our vision includes your alls.
Thank you all very much for the presentation. It was great. I'm very excited about it. I think it'd be a great place for my own child to hang out and interact with other kids. I just have a question for our own staff. What exactly is the process? What do we need to do to, I mean, there has to be an MOU at some point to be able to move forward and say, we're going to dedicate this land to this project, if that's what we decide to do. And, you know, as she said, I know our Parks Department is working on a master plan, and I know that you all have met with our Parks Director as well. I don't know if she's here or not, but...
She's on her way.
Okay. But I just, that's my question, is you know, what do we need to do?
We would need to work with moms on board to enter an agreement similar to what we're doing with El Paso Border Youth Athletic Association at Gaiagos Park. So we would need to work through the terms and form an actual agreement and bring that back to the court for approval.
Commissioner Hagerty?
I've met with moms on board. A lot of this I love, and a lot of this I can see we can duplicate to the other parks. A lot of it scares me just in the workings of it, the golf course and the train and some of those things where we've got to figure out if it's doable, would that be our responsibility? Would you bring your own putter? I mean, these are the things that I think have to be worked out, and so I understand it's just the vision and design stage, but I think more than anything, I think there's a huge need, and I think there's something we can work on to work and have a large one at this park, but we need to make sure it's done in a way that we can shape and move and change so we can duplicate it to some of our other parks as well, so that everyone in El Paso has those advantages. So it's something I think we can definitely work with as far as the group goes, as far as the design concept goes. Some of it scares me just because I don't know if we need a county golf course person at the Escarrete Golf Course, but I don't know. I mean, we already ran out paddle boats and things, so it might be just a portion of that. So I like the ideas. Some of them I think work, some of them I think are in theory, and I don't think anything's set in stone. So it's something I think we need to move forward on because I can see a true value for the community.
And on that note, Commissioner Hagerty, I know Veronica is very excited about the concept, and she has some things as far as like parks planning where she'd want to really work with a group on where it would be located, you know, as far as incorporating it into an overall parks plan, our plan for that park. And we are also working on, I believe you all are aware, we applied for a grant recently to do an all-inclusive, a much smaller version at one of our other parks, you know. So we are working towards, we've heard you all make those comments, and we are working towards incorporating that into our general park planning.
So can we just give our staff some direction to continue to work with Mobb and look at what, you know, and that agreement that we need, needs to include, and so we can bring it forth in the future for the court to approve entering into the contract?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay with you?
Do we need a vote on that, or is it something we can just give consensus for?
So, this item isn't posted for action, but you as the court are free to give instruction, direction, and input to your employees, which is what you've done, so we're good with the direction you've given, if you'd like to add more specifics or anything, but there's not a vote needed.
There needs to be one spot where my son can hurt himself because he does that at parks all the time.
You got it. Whatever you need.
If my son doesn't say, "Watch this, it's going to be dangerous," we're not at the park.
I would like to introduce Deborah as the architect firm, so this was her vision.
Thank you so much for taking the time and, you know, giving us an idea what the concept looks like, and, you know, it may not be exactly what is right there, but I love just the visual, being able to see, you know, how it possibly, you know, how it could be laid out, and something to work for. So thank you.
Master plan, and it's phased, and so there's a lot of time for some...
Thank you all again for the presentation and for what you do. Even though I'm not a mom, I'm on your Facebook page as well, so I suggest to other fathers that need, you know, there's all kinds of great information there.
I think that's why it's Mobb.
Yeah, we might turn it into a Mobb rather than Moms on Board. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This brings us to item number six from the regular agenda. Item number six, board appointments. Discuss and take appropriate action to reappoint Ricardo Avalos to the Emergency Services District Number Two Board for a second two-year term beginning January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019.
Judge, Commissioners, Mr. Avalos is someone the court previously discussed reappointment. We were working with him to complete the required trainings. He has done that, and we would ask your consideration to reappoint him to ESD Number Two through December 31st, 2019.
Move to approve their appointment. Second? Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Commissioners Court. Approve and authorize the closure from 7:00 AM to midnight of Flagger Street, Crag Street, north of the Exxon gas station, Crag Street, south of the intersection with Marvin Lane, Vista del Este Street, Paseo del Este Street, and Stansbury Street on July 4th, 2018. All streets lead into residential areas that are affected by hazardous and unsafe conditions due to the high volume of pedestrian and/or vehicle traffic on Independence Day.
Commissioners, we've spoken about fireworks over the last two Monday meetings. This is just another very brief update. As I mentioned last Monday, we did not meet the 575 on the KBDI to ban sticks and fins, nor were we going to take any action to issue a disaster declaration. And so this is, again, a very quick briefing, and I've also invited some of our community partners to share some of the work that they've been doing over the last several weeks to prepare like we have over the last two years when fireworks have been allowed. And so to update everyone on the KBDI, as mentioned previously, El Paso, in those years when we did have the ability to ban fireworks, was ranked number one and number two on the KBDI scale. As of today, we're ranked 40th at 565. So there are 39 other counties that have a much higher KBDI than we do. And so, again, part of the rationale as to why we were not going to take any action this year. And I'd like to invite up our partners we have with us, with the Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant Witke, Fire Marshal Roger Esparza with ESD Number Two, and Chief Rodriguez with the City-County Office of Emergency Management, just to share some perspective on the work that goes into planning for the Fourth of July. And so I'd like to ask Lieutenant Witke to briefly share with us some of the work that he has been engaged in, in terms of added law enforcement presence on that day and the efforts for the cleanup on July 5th. Good morning, Lieutenant Witke.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Lieutenant Witke with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, and I'm in charge of the Montana Station, which oversees all of the Montana-Vista area, as well as the part of Horizon where we get a lot of our activity. And so we're going to do a lot of what we did last year. I think last year we were very successful in the operation that we put together, and some of the things that we've done is, I have a few numbers here as far as the impact on the resources that we have to pool to address all the issues that happen. But first, I mean, mainly, our objectives at night are to maintain a safe environment despite the influx of people. When we do not have fireworks banned, we see thousands of persons and vehicles enter the Montana-Vista area, anywhere from Joe Battle, Montana, all the way up to Waco Tanks area, and Zaragoza, Montana, up to the city limits. And of course, in the Horizon area, we see a lot of activity on East Lake itself, all the way up to I-10 and Pelicanos Street. So we increase patrol presence and visibility to reduce criminal incidents and accidents, assaults, actively patrol for intoxicated drivers, and in partnership with the Montana-Vista Fire Department and Horizon Fire Department, promote fire safety and educate the public on some of the consequences regarding fire hazards, some of the fire hazards. I talked about some of the areas of concern. We'll have, that night, on the Fourth of July, Wednesday night, we'll have 21 El Paso County Sheriff's Office deputies from the Montana Station, the Clint Station, and also the Vinton Station that will be helping out. We're allocating additional 18 deputies from other specialized sections. It includes traffic and some of our impact sections, and some of our community-oriented policing deputies, so they will flex their schedules to come in and help out that night. Last year, we had the assistance of DPS and the constables, just to piece Precinct Number Six, and DPS was able to allocate 13 troopers on the Fourth of July. Some were day shift, some were night shift. I've gotten in contact with them again, and they will again help us out, but this year they'll have all-night shift troopers, and they're pulling some resources from Fort Hancock, I've been told. And we'll again have the constables from JP-6 helping out with an additional five constables. This year, we have an added dimension as Escarrete Park is having an event on Wednesday night as well, and I've met with Ms. Myers, and Chief and I, and Ms. Myers are going to meet today in the afternoon again to discuss what's going to happen there, but Ms. Myers, I believe they're going to have upwards of maybe 10, 12,000 people that might attend the park that night. They're having a fireworks display and some live bands. So we're having to allocate some personnel to man the park. There's no introduction of alcohol still, and they're not going to have sales of alcohol within the park, but that's a lot of people to not send. We're working with the OEM, Office of Emergency Management. County Roads and Bridges is providing barriers so that we can block the streets that you mentioned here a little while ago. Working with DPS, we're working with the jail annex for the cleanup efforts. They're going to provide some inmates so that they can help us clean the streets. As we all know, they leave a big mess, and so it's our responsibility to clean it up as well. Techstat, Montana-Vista Fire Department, and Horizon Fire Department, as well as the constables. And so, kind of like last year, we're splitting up that whole Montana area into five different zones. Our law enforcement response will not be east and west on Montana as it's too congested. Previous years, we used to, the deputies used to love to work that night because we would spend eight hours driving on the shoulder, passing everybody with our lights and sirens. No longer can we do that, so our response is more north and south through the residential areas, which are on each side of Montana, so as to get to these calls a little bit quicker. And that's about it. Have any other questions that I can address?
I think everyone has a right to shoot fireworks, but I also think people have the right to have quiet enjoyment of their properties. And I completely understand the need to close these streets, and I hope people, when they're out there shooting fireworks, respect other people's rights and use a little common sense and respect over the evening, because it gets to where you take something that should be fun and it makes it not fun. And I have no issue with the closing of these streets. There should be a place that they can go to do this. I think we're doing the steps that are needed to be done, but if you're planning on shooting fireworks on next Wednesday... But if you're planning on shooting fireworks on next Wednesday, at least think before you do. Don't shoot them towards other people or into houses or things of that nature, which is what we always hear stories of people doing. So try to have a little bit of common sense is my request to the El Paso County area.
That is excellent advice. Because as much common sense as we would like people to have or it's something that you think would need to be addressed, but we do respond to a lot of calls where there's a lot of brush fires. Before we started blocking off those streets, you know, inevitably, a lot of those fireworks would end up in people's backyards and hitting people's houses and things like that. So excellent advice.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, you briefly touched on the cleanup. But if I remember from previous years, it's a massive cleanup that takes not only one day, but it goes on to several days. And a lot of times, it's in people's backyards or their property that people go on and shoot their fireworks and never bother to clean up their own mess. If I remember correctly, it was more than one day cleanup last year and the year possibly before that.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I'm trying to find here the page where we had the total number of trash bags that we collected last year in the cleanup efforts. And I cannot find it here, but it was upwards of, maybe here it is. 179 bags of fireworks trash picked up last year. This is the after-action report from the previous year. Last year, we had 220 dedicated El Paso County Sheriff's Office man-hours to the operation, 128 surplus hours. We extended 112.5 gallons of fuel, 193 calls for service on the 4th of July in the Montana area alone. That's for us and really for anybody, that's a lot of calls for service. But so I believe the probationers also help in the cleanup efforts. And so it's a little different with them. They don't need to be supervised the entire time. But somebody, we had a gentleman from, where was he from? Also County Roads and Bridges. And so he takes some of the probationers out there and they help with the effort. Last year, as we're doing this year again, we incorporated our warrants section. And so that day, they will assist by supervising the inmates that we use from the jail. And so we've already contacted the jail and they're going to have as many trustees, as we call them, inmates that are allowed to come out and work, you know, for some credit hours. And so, yeah, it takes the entire day there for us and also the probationers. But it is a couple of days of coordinated effort, Commissioner.
That segues nicely, I think, into Chief Rodriguez's piece. We tracked the cost, I believe in 2016, for the operations and Chief Rodriguez is leading that effort and has had several meetings with all of our regional stakeholders. So Chief, I'm not sure if you want to talk about the meetings you've had and the costs.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name's Jorge Rodriguez. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City County of El Paso. In the advent of the terrorism events that we've seen domestically and internationally related to special events, OEM created a special events work group last year, primarily to ensure that we were coordinating with our public service agencies and all the stakeholders, event organizers, to make sure we have a safe and secure event for all of the citizens and participants. For the intent behind this special events work group is to ensure that we have a common operating picture between all the stakeholders and that we have an incident action plan that organizes all the activities from law enforcement, fire, EMS, to the event organizers' plans that they have for their participants. Make sure that we're all looking at the same picture. Another aspect of it is ensuring that we have a consistent cycling, plan cycle between all the events to ensure that we're covering all the bases. For this event, we're going to have our final meeting this Friday and that will close out our incident action plan for this event. We've done several events beyond this one. We've had some experience last year with the Neon Music Festival, immediately after the Manchester attack. We did that planning. We've done the Sun City Music Festival, the Celebration Lights and the Thanksgiving Parade, those being the two largest events that we have within the county footprint. But so this particular event, it is a very large operation. It's unique in that it doesn't have an event organizer. So it's something that is kind of just, you know, whatever presents itself that day and the great work that the ESDs and SO does to try to control what they can in those areas. So we'll be tracking the costs as part of that and what we're gaining from all respective agencies, we'll be getting that. And the end state of it is again, having that common operating picture and an organized incident action plan that will be available for all the participants.
Thank you, Chief. Then we have with us our ESD Fire Marshal for ESD Number Two, Chief Esparza, to just briefly touch on some of the work that he does in regards to the inspections and communication with vendors that he and our office have been having and then just any fire safety tips that you might have.
Commissioners, good morning. I've been working with all fireworks vendors in the past. TNT Fireworks has always offered to put trash cans out there to resolve some of this. In the past years, they have been out there picking up all the trash, even what's not theirs. We didn't make, we didn't take any communications with them on that this year, but I'm pretty sure that we will. Right now, we're still going through the phase. We just met Friday is what we're going to be doing. And again, we will be meeting on this coming Friday. So all assets of the district will be available for, you know, for fireworks, fires, which we're thinking is going to be minimal. In the past years, we've had approximately 100 fireworks stands. This year, we're at 20. Okay? So I think it's very minimal. And I can, if you'd like, I'd give you a breakdown of where they're going to be at, which is Montana Vista is our biggest concentration right now. We are looking at, there's three of them in the Anthony area, three of them in the Fabinz area, one in Cano Tio, three in the Socorro area, which Socorro are banned. We're talking the unincorporated area of the county, one in Clint, outside of the city of Clint, and eight in Montana Vista and one in Torneo. So our biggest concentration is definitely going to be Montana Vista. Everywhere else is pretty much in New Mexico or in the west side, it's going to be in the New Mexico area. We're going to figure out how we're going to mitigate all this. And we are definitely going to be out there giving the public safety tips on fireworks.
Thank you, and thanks to the three of you. I know there are so many other folks that are working on this, but thank you for taking the lead on it. And so briefly again, Commissioners, these are the same street closures that we've closed over the last two years. We added one last year, which is that crag after Exxon that you see on your screen. So these are the two closures for the Homestead Meadows area, the two for the Montana Vista area, and the two for the Americas Estates area. And we've spoken to residents in those three areas in collaboration with Commissioner Perez's office over the last several years to ensure that they feel like we're closing the right areas. And they've all communicated that they have been helpful over the last three years and have asked that we do the same again this year. And so that is what is before the Commissioners today is just approving the street closures. And then quickly, here's just a list of some of those professional displays that will be going on leading up to the 4th of July and on the 4th for the public to enjoy. And we'll be sending out a press release today to the media so that they have this available and can share this with their viewers and their readers. But I would ask for favorable consideration, Commissioners, on these street closures.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Stout. Haggerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. And thanks for your patience, too. Thanks. Have a good afternoon.
Clap.
Item number eight, economic development. Receive a presentation from Lone Star Property Assessed Clean Energy and discuss and take appropriate action to add Lone Star Pace as a secondary provider.
Good morning, Judges and Commissioners. Lee McCormick with Lone Star Pace. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. As was mentioned, we are here to request that the Commissioners Court consider adding Lone Star Pace as the second program administrator to the county's Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. Adding a second administrator will increase competition, which will help increase service quality and drive down costs throughout the county with regards to Pace. But most importantly, it'll help improve the outreach to the local community. Having two administrators educating the local property owners and contractors and lenders who wish to participate in Pace will make this program a more successful program than it has been in the past. A little about Lone Star Pace. We do program administrator for local governments, cities and counties throughout Texas. We are one of, I believe, only two program administrators for Pace in the country that is also a registered municipal advisory firm, meaning that we are regulated by the Municipal Securities Rule Banking Board, the Securities and Exchange Commission, and the Texas State Securities Board. So even though we are overseeing the program on behalf of the county, we actually have three regulatory agencies that are overseeing us as well, adding an extra layer of security. Our principals have been doing program administration since 2003. In the last 15 years, we've done over $15 billion of environmental, economic development, and public benefit financing in over 35 states, mainly through tax-exempt private activity bonds, new market tax credits, and Property Assessed Clean Energy programs. Here in Texas, we facilitated over $700 million of economic development and environmental projects for projects in over 40 cities and counties throughout the state. Obviously, the county already knows what Pace is. You have an existing program. The county's program was adopted back in August of 2016. Since then, there's been one commercial project done, a $2.3 million upgrade to the local mall. As you're aware, Property Assessed Clean Energy is a way for local businesses to upgrade their facilities with energy and water efficiency improvements that are paid back through a long-term property assessment. Because it is secured by property tax assessment, the lenders are willing to go out with a longer term on the loan, typically 20 to 30 years versus seven to 10. And that allows the property owner to more closely marry up the utility cost savings from the improvements with the cost of the improvements so they essentially pay for themselves over time. So it's a great program for economic development and sustainability in the county that requires no taxpayer dollars or administration. So the types of projects that qualify, virtually any existing commercial, industrial, or multifamily complex, multifamily with five or more units can take advantage of Property Assessed Clean Energy. This can be done for existing buildings. It's been very popular for upgrades and renovations to older buildings. You'll typically see office space, whether it's leased or owner-occupied, has been a high target. Hotels have taken advantage of Pace around the country pretty aggressively. And then you have your retail and industrial facilities as well. So virtually anything that's not residential or new construction can take advantage of Pace financing. The types of qualifying improvements for energy efficiency, we are typically seeing HVAC heating and cooling system upgrades as well as the controlling systems, cool roofs, cool windows, insulation upgrades, and LED lighting are some of the major components that go in for the energy efficiency upgrades. For water efficiency, they tend to be more bathroom-related, low-flow, sinks, toilets, and showers. And then on the out exterior, you'll see some drip irrigation replacing sprinklers. Renewable energy does also qualify for Pace. We see some solar installations going on. Wind turbines are available, but because it has to be attached to the building, it's a much harder type of improvement to qualify under the program. The benefits to the property owners here in El Paso County, first and foremost, you can get 100% financing so you don't have a 20% down. So that helps their cash flow from day one. The biggest benefit really is it's a way for them to upgrade their facilities with energy and water efficiency improvements. And because of that longer-term payout, or longer-term loan repayment term, they can essentially match up those utility savings. And it saves a lot on their cash flow, which we'll talk about on this next slide. This is a brief comparison of a conventional loan compared to a Pace loan. The top chart is what a conventional loan would look like for a $1 million of improvements to a building that would generate $100,000 a year in utility bill savings. What you'll notice is it's a seven-year loan with a 5% interest rate, 20% down or $200,000 down, out of pocket from day one for that property owner. And the annual payment over those seven years is $172,000 per year. So they're saving $100,000 a year, they're paying $172,000. So for that seven-year period, they're negative $72,000 in cash flow. By the end of the seventh year, that property owner is out of pocket $700,000 before it starts turning cash flow positive. Once that loan's paid off, he starts now reaping some of the benefit of those improvements. But it's not until year 15 when he actually breaks even on his investment. Year 15 to year 20, the last five years, he's getting that $100,000 of savings free and clear. So he ends up with a half million dollars in savings over the life of the loan, but it's all on the back end, the last five years. With a Pace financing, because you're aligning those costs with the benefits, you're looking at a 20-year term versus seven, a 6.5% interest rate. So it is a higher interest rate because you're paying it out for a longer term, just like a mortgage. But the annual payments are a little over $90,000 per year. So you're saving between $9,000 and $10,000 a year from day one. Over a 20-year period, you'll save between $180,000 and $200,000. So you're not saving as much over the 20-year period, but you're never going negative cash flow to the extent of $700,000. So for most property owners, this is a much better alternative for financing their improvements than a conventional bank loan. Benefits for local governments. This is a no-cost, no-liability, no-administration way for the county to encourage economic development. You're basically helping local businesses upgrade their facilities with sustainable improvements without putting any taxpayer dollars at risk. You're basically helping to attain the county's sustainability goals in the meantime. So it's a win-win for both the business owner and the county. The steps involved in basically adding Lone Star Pace as a second administrator are very straightforward. You already approved resolution intent back in 2016. So it would entail updating the program report and posting it to the website. The update would simply be adding the ability to have a second program administrator, posting it to the website for the public to review, and then at a later Commissioners Court meeting, have a public hearing and pass a resolution amending the Pace program to allow for a second program administrator. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do have a couple of questions. So you had, is this, are there any other communities in Texas that have adopted more than one administrator? Because I'm not familiar with that.
No, currently, there are none. We are currently talking with four. We expect three to four to adopt. Actually, I think two of the four are looking to adopt a second administrator and two are looking to adopt us as their first administrator.
And have there been any Pace projects that you all have executed in Texas?
We have not. So we launched last, towards the end of the summer last year. Unfortunately for us, we launched right into election season. So a lot of counties kind of put things on hold until the primaries were over a couple of months ago. So we basically, we're kind of in a slow education mode through the winter. And now that the primaries are over, a lot of counties are willing to kind of take a look at adding a second administrator.
And you all, you all, I guess, helped create a system where you help the company or the business with individuals seeking to use Pace. You've created a system for them to work within, I assume. So it's similar to Pace in the Box, but a little different?
We actually utilize the Pace in the Box model. So we are, if you look at us and the existing program administrator, we're virtually identical. The main differences between the two of us, we operate the programs the same. We both go out and do contractor education. We both go out and work with lenders that are qualified for Pace. So there is very little difference between the two. The two main differences are, one, they're set up as a nonprofit. We're set up as a registered municipal advisory firm. And they don't really like the fact that, they like to have a single administrator model and we're all for competition. We believe competition's good. And ultimately, the county maintains control of the program. If you have two administrators, you actually have two programs to evaluate over time that are running, administered very identically. And you can see if one program's working and one's not. Hopefully, both programs are working well, all to the benefit of the businesses and the residents of El Paso County. But you ultimately maintain control, whether it's one or two administrators.
I've reached out to the Agro-Passover Association of Realtors because it's kind of what their thing is. And they've not had a chance to get the information back to me. A lot of what he says I agree with. I have an issue with monopolies of any kind. And I have trouble wrapping my head around the fact that having a single firm is more beneficial. And I reached back to the electric company to have that conversation where our rates are very high, whereas in Houston and some other areas, rates are very low. But I've had a chance to meet with them. I've not had a chance to meet with the other administration and get their viewpoints. And I think it's fair to listen to both parties. I think it's fair to listen to both parties. I'm leaning towards that agreement, but I think it's fair to hear from all parties, and I would like to get the information back from the Realtors before I make any decisions. I do see a value in exactly what his opening statement was. With two administrators, you have two people telling the benefits, and hopefully more people get the information about it. I've gotten emails, I assume somebody else has too, that saying it's a bad idea. And I think it's only fair to hear from both sides before I make a decision. But I do lean towards having two, because I don't understand how not having two, I don't understand how monopoly changes personally. But I think it's fair to hear from both sides before I make that decision. And I'd like to hear what the Realtors have to say. And I'm going to be inviting them back next week to have their conversation as well, the Realtors.
And I think that, Commissioner, to your point, gives us time to think through what having more than one administrator means for the county, because we could get requests from three or four others. And so how, at what point do we say we're going to take them all in? And what does that do for this framework and for competition? And so we've got to wrap our head around that, too. And I haven't had a chance to do that either. And so I appreciate the presentation, because this gives us perspective, and it gives us some questions to think through in moving forward. But I don't know that I'd be ready to move forward quite yet. That's just me. Not to say that it may not happen in the future, but...
I'm the same way. I need a lot more information. Is there somebody here that wanted to speak on this?
Yes, I was going to let the commissioners ask any questions that they may have, but Charlene Hydenger with Keeping Pace in Texas and the Texas PACE Authority is here as well. Charlene, did you want to mention anything? Sure, go ahead. She has signed up to...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do I have a member of the city's economic development team? Lauren, I'm not sure, did you want to? Okay, thanks. Good afternoon, good morning.
Thank you for a brief opportunity to ask you to wait before you take action, to hear from your community. The decisions, these decisions affect the trust and the reputation of the program, and that's going to affect the willingness of various essential parties to participate. So I wanted to just also clarify for the record regarding what the PACE in a Box model is that you have created. It is a public servant to you. You are the client. It is an extension of your staff. That's how we see it. That's how it was designed in Texas. Creating additional administrators is, as Mr. Tim Crockett from Houston emailed to you, similar to having two committee, or two county commissioners. You have one administrator who administers all of your programs. The only place I can think of where it makes sense to have more than one Ms. Keller is the racecourse, right? There is an issue of confusion that happens when there's a reason you have one, there's one permitting office, there's one public health inspector-type thing. There's a limit to what we do, and that's what I want to talk to you about. Have you have, if you have been given the impression that we are out there creating deals on our own behalf, or on behalf of the county, that would be incorrect. There are only two functions of a PACE in a Box administrator. One, most importantly, is to ensure that there is a level playing field, where the private sector determines all of its own initiatives, it puts its own projects together, it finds the highest and best use of this program. And the administrator's role is simply to make sure that the best practices, both technical and underwriting, are satisfied. It does education and outreach as well, but on a community-wide basis. It does not pick favorites, it does not affect the marketplace. So along those lines, I would like to work with you to clarify what PACE in a Box means. It's not just that we all use the same documents. There is a fundamental reason that the mortgage bankers, the Texas Association of Business, the Texas Association of Manufacturers, TAC, TML, Conference of Urban Counties, were all at the table when we built this program. It has, it draws a hard line between the administration and the private sector. So to clarify, that hard line results in several principles that I'd like to say today. We didn't codify these in our documents with you, but we'd be very willing to do it, and it's something that you should consider in any PACE arrangement that you might make. Drawing the line between the administrator and the private sector is self-dealing. The administrator should not review any project in which it or any of its business affiliates have a financial or personal relationship. The administrator should not accept financial support from any of its affiliates or anybody in the business of creating these PACE projects that it's supposed to oversee. The administrator should be prohibited from participating in the marketplace. The administrator should not provide services that compete with services in your marketplace. And by example, that would be deal origination, project development, servicing, independent third-party reviewers. We're trying to create economy for your contractors and your folks in your community. And it would be a mistake for the county to establish a program and choose people that are actually competing in your private sector. The administration should not be allowed to distort the marketplace. It should not have favored lenders. It should not be allowed to engage lenders. It should not have specific lists of lenders. It should not require the private sector to use a specific servicer or a specific attorney. These are things that we see done in other multi-administrator markets, and we think they're harmful. And in the Texas design of PACE in a Box, that was all specifically rejected. All fees should be pre-approved and supported by the statute. There should not be hidden fees or fees for services outside of the statute. The statute says there is an administrative fee based on cost that the county establishes. So not others, nothing else should be going on that you haven't seen and approved ahead of time. And finally, the outreach that's discussed here, as I mentioned recently in our annual report to you, has involved an enormous amount of foundation building. You don't, people just don't run and use this program the first time they've heard of it. They have to have a need, and they have to understand it. But they have to have a contractor community and a mortgage lender community, and available PACE capital providers ready to go, who understand the program. And so the idea that there needs to be this race to projects can actually be quite harmful and actually prohibit competition. Your market is developing very quickly, and our ability to work with your economic development department has been phenomenal. We're copying ideas that we share with them, that they share with us in other jurisdictions as well. We are a part of your economic development opportunity, and having multiple administrators creates doubt, and creates doubt not only about trusting the program, but the motivations and how, and it also causes confusion. If you've got contractors and lenders trying to maneuver among various programs, that is a disincentive. We worked very hard to create a program that is uniform, user-friendly, sustainable, and scalable. And we believe we're doing that for you. Our view isn't letting every Tom, Dick, and Harry who wants to run a PACE program in representing the county. Because if you go to two, it will be five, and it will be seven, and Texas will begin to look like the California and Florida programs that, Google, that have all kinds of problems. You can read, you can read the testimony from the State Energy Conservation Office. The technical standards have to be trusted. If you've got competing administrators chasing the same deals, it will be just as you've seen in the computer industry. This is not a commodity. When people start competing with each other, the lenders will say, who can give us the best deal? And the next thing you know, customer service and these technicals and underwriting standards are going to get whittled away in the competition, and it will be erased to the bottom. My suggestion instead is to compare and look at what's out there and really determine what it is that this is. If this is a service that the county is offering to your business community and your nonprofits, it's a service that needs to be trusted. You, it's, people are going to trust that you created it, that it is serving the public. So my suggestion would be, compare the websites, compare the experience, compare the community that is behind the program you already have. That community is in touch with you by email and elsewhere, asking you for the highest principles, because they can't lend money and they can't get the mortgage lenders to allow these projects to move forward unless there's full trust. If you think there's a better organization out there that can do a better job for you, then we would gladly participate in an RFP process. But we believe that the quality of this program depends on the county's administration and the ability of people to trust that. And if you have one administrator who's pre-clearing fees, et cetera, with you, you're going to have a program that you can be proud of, that people can trust, that will actually succeed. This is developing exactly, as we said, we warned you this was going to take time, the pipeline is out there and it's good, and the people working on that pipeline should never be the administrator. And the people working on those pipelines are communicating this to you now. We've also already lowered our fees twice, and we restate the commitment I've made every time I've been in front of you. The administrative fees are lower than our costs right now, and we are supported by the Meadows Foundation, the Rockefeller Brothers Fund, and the Environmental Defense Fund. When we become self-sufficient with this fee, we will be back to you to lower it. Anyone else who's suggesting they can run a quality program at the same fee that we are operating, or less, is being subsidized by someone else, and you should ask who that is. And with that, may I answer any questions?
Questions?
We look forward to sharing more information with you in the week, and if you would be willing to allow further study, we would be very grateful. Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm not sure if you want to just go ahead and leave this as a presentation item. We can always bring it back again to take action.
It's not posted for action today, so we can't...
It, I think it is, and discuss and take appropriate action to add Lone Star PACE as a secondary provider. So I would just ask to leave it as a presentation, or at least that's my recommendation. Is that... With no action? Okay. Thank you.
I do have a request. We've now heard from two different administrators with the pros and cons. Can we direct staff to do some research on different states or counties who have gone to two and what their beliefs are? Is that possible to get? Betsy, Jose?
I think that's a good idea, and the conversation that I had with Jose this morning...
Sure.
...I voiced the same, the same concern, or the same issue that I think would be great for our economic development department to go ahead and research the issue a little bit more in-depth, and working with our legal department. You know, I thought, for some reason, thought we weren't even going to post it for action today, but because our legal, even if we were going to take action, our legal department had told us that we couldn't. So I was confused, but, but yeah, I think that would be great for our economic development experts to give us...
A recommendation.
A recommendation. Of course, for any other information that people may need, because this came up quickly, and it's something that I thought we needed to have a discussion about, because, you know, it was going to come up sooner or later, and it came up sooner. And so I thought it was important for us to give Lone Star the opportunity to come and let us know what their organization does, and as well as, you know, weigh the options. I think that we can't take, make decisions in a vacuum. I think we need to have as much information as we can about the program that we, that we feel may be best for our community. So I want to thank you all very much for coming out and giving the presentation. And Charlene, thank you for coming and giving us your views. I'm sure all of you got the same emails that I did. There's a number of letters that we received from different organizations, but I think it'd be better to get all of the questions answered before we...
Jose Quinones, Economic Development Director. We'll be glad to look at this and to further give us a couple of weeks, and we'll submit a report to the court. And if you have any questions specifically that you also want us to address in the meantime, please feel free to send them to me, so that we can make sure we consider those questions in our analysis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
But no further action on item number eight? Judge?
Mr. Knob, I believe that there was a request to go back to the consent agenda and pull item 3I and 3J for discussion.
Yes, sir. Please have a motion to reconsider those items?
So move.
Second.
Signe Neemer...
We have to take the vote. Sorry, Signe. We haven't voted yet.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Haggerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 3I is to approve and authorize the county judge to sign amendment number one to IBM number 16PO152, which modifies the county's original contract with the U.S. section of the International Boundary and Water Commission regarding responsibility for payment and construction of the levee road depression beneath the Torneo Guadalupe International Bridge. Funding is available in CP, Torneo Port of Entry 12 Construction, contract number 2018-0067. Item 3J, approve and authorize the Public Works Department to work with the Purchasing Department to issue a bid for the construction of a project identified as the levee road depression, coupled with retaining wall beneath the Torneo Guadalupe International Bridge. Funds have been designated in CP Torneo Guadalupe Port of Entry 12 Construction.
Good morning. Signe Neemer from the County Attorney's Office. I requested that these items be reconsidered. They are not appropriate items to have been on consent agenda, and there was some discussion that you needed to know regarding these contracts. We are modifying, we originally entered into a contract with IBWC so that we would pay the cost, but IBWC would do the construction of the, on the levee depression. When we went through that process, after you approved a contract and we sent $191,000 to IBWC to cover the cost of doing that contract, it included an engineering estimate of about $150,000. And then we had an excess amount for contingencies in that budget, because IBWC, under the federal guidelines, had to move very quickly and couldn't go as slowly as we go if they had to do any contract amendments along the way. So we extra plumped that number up. Under this contract, that $191,000 will be coming back to the county, and the county will be doing the construction. What happened during the process and working with IBWC is that, first of all, they kept changing their requirements for the construction. And so the costs increased substantially compared to where we started. They had to bring in all of the FEMA requirements and add all kinds of additional engineering stuff, I'll call it, to that contract and to the specifications and the drawings. Then IBWC considered that to be a small contract. They, under their requirements for bidding, went to the SBA and selected, without any bidding, a contractor who was pre-approved, and then the contractor came back and bid the contract. Even with our new cost estimate, that bid came in two or three times as high as what we were anticipating. Now, the federal government does not allow the disclosure of bids, even after they close the bid process, reject the bids, anything like that. So I can't, we... So I can't, we were never told. We were just given kind of an indication that the amount was going to be very much higher. So in a meeting that included SEA, Structural Engineering Associates from San Antonio, Mr. Hernandez from our Road and Bridge Department, and myself, we said, "We're not going to go along with this." And so we reached an agreement with IBWC to reverse this process so that it would come back to us, and we would do the construction, and we would go through the normal bid procedure, the competitive bid procedure. So when we are estimating the amount of this contract now, we know what we normally do, but we also know that extraordinarily high bid that we got, and so it's been very difficult to know how to budget this particular contract. So we have requested, in our backup, $400,000 for this project. We think that will be way too much, but we want to be on the safe side, and we wanted you to understand that when you approve this contract. So it accidentally got put on to consent, and I apologize for that, but we do want you to approve the contract. The contract is actually returning the $191,000 to us, but it is also putting the burden on us to do this work. Now, IBWC is very much involved in this contract. They will be out doing side inspections. They like to change things, but we think we're on solid ground right now and that the bid process will be much better for the county. We won't be wasting a lot of extra funds because of the way things went before. But we wanted you to know that, and so with that background information, to ask that you reapprove Items I and J from the consent agenda.
This is just the gift that keeps on giving, isn't it?
Yes.
Always happy news when it comes to this bridge.
And have we identified...
We're very close to the end.
Have we identified a funding source for that extra?
The funding source is properly identified, and we have already had these set aside discussions with Ms. Keller as well as with the Auditor's Office. So there are plenty of funds available. We're not worried about that part.
Are there questions? I'd make a motion to approve Item I and J as read into the record.
Okay.
Thank you for the additional information. Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Signe. Have a good afternoon.
Approve the award of RFP Number 17-038, Internal Revenue Service Section 457 Deferred Compensation Plan for County Employees to Nationwide, Columbus, Ohio. Purchasing approved recommendation on May 21, 2018. There is no cost to the county.
Good morning. Oh, is it afternoon?
It's morning.
Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we had a very robust RFP process. In the end, after the top two were evaluated, Nationwide did come out on top, and we're requesting award based on the negotiated items to this point.
Judge, Commissioners, I do think it's important you know on this item, we currently offer employees three different options, I believe, and this will be taking them down to one option. So by awarding to one, you are changing from offering, HR will be working to transition from three deferred comp providers to one.
What happens to the people who are using the other two providers?
Natalia Chaparro from HR, I believe, can provide some additional information.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Commissioner, to answer your question, for those individuals, for those employees that are currently participating with the current providers of the 457, they can still have their funds remain with those providers. So the old providers, if you decide...
All new clients will go to the one, all previous clients go to the state.
Correct. It's their choice if they want to participate, but they can keep the funds with the current providers if they choose to.
Keep those funds?
But they can't keep, they won't be able to keep contributing to those providers.
There won't be any more contributions. It'll just cut off, and they'll have it with the old company, and then the new, any new contributions will go to Nationwide.
That is correct.
You know, this kind of goes with my earlier comment. I have an issue when we create a monopoly of sorts and not give people the opportunity to choose which one they want to work with and which one... Why do we want to only have one option for people to choose from?
That's a very good question, Commissioner. We actually looked at that thoroughly, and in considering this one vendor, it far exceeds the benefits of having additional vendors because they are providing greater benefits to our employees and actually to the employees and to our workforce. So by having this one vendor, we really capitalize on the benefits versus having several.
So some of the ideas of what I've seen normally is if you go with an exclusive provider, they'll provide either lower fees or no fees, they'll add additional benefits such as financial advising, one-on-ones, things like that, that they wouldn't provide if the business is being spread out amongst multiple providers. So when HR did the, when the team did the analysis, I'm imagining of the responses, you found that there was benefit by giving an exclusive contract.
That is correct.
We've spoken about this before. How many employees are left on the other two plans? Do we know? It was rather small. I know one of them was very small, and the other had a little more, but...
Okay. With the specific providers, I have with Valek 94 and with Voya 408. So that's the, those are the remaining.
Pretty good number of people.
And I think the last time we spoke, we also were wondering whether or not there could be a transfer from one to the other without there being any penalties to the employees? I think that was one of the questions we had asked.
Correct. If they can decide to transfer the funds, to roll over the funds to the new provider if you choose to go that direction, so employees can transfer the funds without any charges. That is my understanding correct.
Following up on that, just to dovetail, can employees leave their funds with the older company but yet start anew with a new one?
That is absolutely correct, Commissioner. The only difference is if they leave the funds with the old company, they won't be able to contribute through payroll deductions, but they can have both options. They can continue with their old company and then with the new company as well.
Employees, I guess, could still add to the existing one, even though it's not our provider, but not through payroll deduction. They just do it on their own.
It wouldn't be a 457 any longer.
Yeah, the problem is it's a tax-deferred situation.
It wouldn't, right. It wouldn't be as a 457.
Yeah, okay.
I don't like, wasn't, I have a problem with us creating, I mean, that's almost math's hard anymore. 600 people that were telling, "We don't believe with your choices. We're changing them for you." And I don't know, I mean, it could be better, but people, I mean, we had three options. They did the research, they picked whichever one they want, or they sat down at the first booth they went to. Either one's on option, but I don't know. Personal beliefs on it, but...
And we do have confirmation, though, they can roll over the money with no fee or...
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay.
Moved. Was that Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item number 10, approve the award of RFP Number 18023, Financial Advisor for the County of El Paso to George K. Baum &amp; Company, Austin, Texas. Purchasing approved recommendation on May 31, 2018. Account funding will be determined when bonds are issued.
Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent. We had another robust RFP process. In this case, George K. Baum &amp; Company of Austin, Texas, was determined to offer the most advantageous proposal to the county, and we're requesting award.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that's our current financial advisor already?
I'm sorry.
That's our current financial advisor already?
I believe that is the case.
Like, they've done a fantastic job in the past, and if the RFP proves them still to be good, move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon has exited the meeting. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I know we have a member of the George K. Baum team here. I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything, or I appreciate you coming in.
Judge, Commissioners, Brad Engst with George K. Baum &amp; Company. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to, again, serve the county. It's been our pleasure for the past five years, and we look forward to assisting you with your projects, providing advice, and doing whatever we can for the residents of this county. Thank you.
Item number 11, approve and authorize the purchasing agent to reject all responses and end the procurement process for RFP Number 18031, Provider of Prescription Drug and/or Dental Care Discount Cards for the County of El Paso, and authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals. In accordance with Local Government Code 262.030, the purchasing agent has reviewed the use of the request for proposal process.
Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent. In this case, I'm asking you to allow me to do two things. First is close down this process. We had an unfortunate incident where, although we notified a lot of vendors, only one responded, but that vendor did not fill out the ethics forms as required, and unfortunately, we cannot review that if the bid process and the ethics requirement are not followed. It's in the best interest of the department for us to turn around and just go back out and do this, and we'll see if we can advertise a little better and see if we can't get a few more responses so we could use it to our advantage.
Is, are these the cards that are in my office that we try to hand people that gives them a discount, and then we get a piece of it back for everything that's done to the county? Okay, just making sure. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is still out of the meeting? Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12, approve and authorize use of National IPA Certified Proposal R132203TX16344, awarded to Roof Connect Logistics Incorporated, doing business as Roof Connect of Sheridan, Arkansas, in the amount of $236,137 for the replacement of the existing roof system of the Fabens Warehouse. Purchasing approved on June 14, 2018. Funding is available in CIP 17, Road and Bridge Renovation Repairs.
Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we are requesting the repair of the Fabens roof through the National IPA contract. Although this company is out of Sheridan, Arkansas, they do meet our needs and our requirements, and if you look at the backup documentation, you will see this is a comprehensive roof repair for this price.
Move to approve. Weird stare-down going on there.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon, excuse me, Hernandez out. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just want to tell you all something about how badly that's needed. I was out there recently, and we're looking at trying to use our old library as a community room, and the roof damage is just a real hindrance to us getting it to that point, so getting this awarded and completed is really appreciated.
Is the library in the warehouse? Where kids can read a book or drive a four-wheeler, all in one. You can read about Bob the Builder or act like Bob the Builder.
Item number 13, approve and authorize use of Buy Board Contract 51616, awarded to Grande Truck Center for Benefit of Association for Truck Enterprises Incorporated of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $38,140. HGA C, Contract Number HT0618, in the amount of $330,636, awarded to Doggett Freightliner of El Paso, Texas. Texas Smart Buy, Contract Number 072A1, in the amount of $450,302.72 and $524,190.68, awarded to Doggett Freightliner of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on June 5, 2018. Funding is available in General Fund, Road and Bridge Flood Control Cap Out Vehicles.
Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we were able to not only shop many cooperatives to find the best pricing for the equipment that's needed, but we were able to find El Paso vendors that held these contracts, and that's a win-win for us, and we're requesting award of these purchases.
Move to approve.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
He's setting me up for 14.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14, approve and authorize a correction to the award of Bid Number 18025, 2018 paving project for the County of El Paso. The bid was awarded on Monday, June 11, 2018, to Jar Concrete Incorporated, doing business as Jar Construction Incorporated of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $2,295,500.
Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent. Thank you, Commissioner Leon. I like to think the things I bring forward are solid. Unfortunately, in the case of the last award, a typo occurred. So while you did award the correct extended amount and the correct total amount to the correct vendor, unfortunately, we had the wrong line item price on the first two. And so if you look, what you originally approved was 980 and 950. The correct price should have been 7.81 and 6.88. Everything else was correct. It was a typo, and I wanted to get it corrected for the record.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you for the correction. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15, award of bid 18029, replace existing generator and automatic transfer switch at the Medical Examiner's Office to El Paso JAG Incorporated of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $62,743. Purchasing approved recommendation on June 15, 2018. Funds are available in CIP 17, Facilities Renovation Repairs.
This was a bid, and there were, Deborah Correjo County Purchasing Agent, this was a bid, there was adequate competition, and we're requesting award to the lowest responsible bidder.
Move to approve.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Item number 16, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Item 16, approve and authorize the Public Works Department to submit a grant application for the fiscal year 2018. for the fiscal year 2019, state rural public transportation grant to the Texas Department of Transportation in the amount of $463,735. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign their certificate of obligation as required by the grant.
Good morning Judge, Commissioner. Salons Public Works Department. Deciding before you is our annual application that we submit so we go towards the 2019 fiscal year state application. This grant will go towards continuing the community service, bus service throughout the county. Fund will go towards administration, operation and equipment. For the total amount of $463,735, staff recommends approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item number 17, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 37 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $556,650, thus increasing the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 overall operating budget of $486,376... to $486,933,574.83.
Good morning County Judge and Commissioners, Gabby Federal from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Judge Commissioners, before we step into executive session, I'd like to ask, we're going to have some deletions and postponements from executive session. Could I please get a motion to delete Item 18B and 18E and 18F in addition to the corresponding regular session agenda items 20 and 21 from the regular session?
Move to delete.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. And could I have a motion, please, to postpone Item Number 18D for one week?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout. Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. And so this brings us to executive session, which will be Items 18A and 18C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at forty-six ninety Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number nine one five, five four six, two zero four eight.
The three forty-six District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at nine one five, five four six, two one one nine, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine one five, five four six, two zero four eight.
Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. Commissioners, we've had this item on the agenda twice now, last week and this week, and we are very lucky in that we have a fantastic community member who has not only served in this capacity before, but has also done other great work on behalf of the county as Commissioner Hagerty is appointed to the UMC Board of Managers as well. And so, um, it, we didn't have to search for very long or go very far to find a qualified, exceptional individual who we think will do a great job, um, given, uh, former J.P. Dixon's resignation from her position as JP seven. So I'm not sure if anybody else would like to add anything before we go to this item or Ms. Keller, legal? Would make a motion to appoint Mr. Stephen Anderson to serve, um, as Justice of the Peace for Precinct Seven.
Second.
Even do we have to add, uh, through the end of this year?
Uh, for the remainder of the unexpired term, I think would be the proper language.
Yes, I would add that to the motion, please.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Anderson, we really appreciate you stepping up in this time of need for the county. Um, and thank you for, for what you've already done on behalf of the organization and continue to do. And we're glad that you can continue to serve on both, uh, the UMC Board of Managers and in this new role. Uh, but would love to hear any comments that you might have.
I look at you all, God, I know how hard you work. I mean, those of us that really have a heart for public service, I've been elected a few times. A little judge and a JP, but you know, my greatest, um, the time I feel best is when a group like you has confidence in me. So I'm gonna take that trust and I will take that back over there and I will finish this race for you all in this respective place and, uh, just keep the wheels of justice going. Thank you for what you guys do. I'm honored and I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You're pretty good. Thank you.
Before you leave, we will need you to go to HR just to complete some paperwork so we can get, um, you reactivated. No, sir, they're right across the street in the lower level of the, um, public parking garage.
Where used to be the tax office.
Yes.
What used to be the tax?
I, forgive me for asking this question. Where's our tax office now?
It's got at the park.
It's got at the park.
And they have satellite locations as well, but their main office is right next to us.
I typically go out to the one on the east side. That's where my law office is located. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. That is the end of today's meeting. Thank you all so much. We're adjourned.
This concludes today's meeting at twelve twenty p.m.